All right, good evening. The time being 7:01 on May 22, 2023. A quorum of the planning board being present. Call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda... Oh, actually, you know what? I'll let some folks know just in case you're here for any of these. Agenda item C. The applicant has requested continuance to our next meeting. That's 1699 Shawshin Street. So we won't hear anything on that tonight. Agenda item E. The applicant, that's 913 East Street. The applicant has requested to have the... The... I'm sorry.
Application.
Application. The application withdrawn without prejudice. So we'll do that. And that means we won't hear anything on that either tonight. And agenda item F. The applicant has asked to continue to our next meeting, which is 2 Radcliffe Road. So if you're here for any of those three things, you don't need to stay. You won't miss anything. Nothing will happen this evening on any of those. With that, we'll move to agenda item A, which is approval of minutes from April 10, 2023, April 24, 2023, and May 8, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the minutes of April 10, April 24, and May 8, 2023.
All right. And motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. And all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item B, which is committee reports, administrative actions. Start with committee reports. Do any of the members have any committee reports they wish to make at this time?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. All right. Moving on to agenda item B2, which is town planners' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Keep it brief this evening. First item, I wanted to note that the housing production plan is still under QAQC right now by NIMCOG. And I intend to have that either at the June 12, the June 26 meeting, depending on how this review by their staff goes. And let's see, next on the horizon, for the June 12 meeting we have coming up, there are going to be six new public hearings. I plan to work with the applicants to ensure an expeditious overview of the projects and outline the progress to be made for the most efficient meeting possible. And just to note that two of the new filings are for retail marijuana establishments. Number three here, the retail marijuana licensing hearings are going to be held by the select board currently over three dedicated meetings on the subject. Pending meetings are to be held June 12, June 13, and June 20. For more information, folks can go to the town website under the Select Boards page and navigate to the Retail Marijuana Licenses tab on the left page menu in blue. And the town manager's office is updating that page regularly for folks. And just a last item. There's going to be quite a few new business openings over the next few weeks, and I look forward to updating the board on those as they come up. Thank you.
Very good. Moving on to agenda item B3. This is 33R4, Executive Place, Andover. Approval not required. Did you state your name for the record? The floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Peter Ellis. I'm with TEC. I'm the civil engineer representing the owner of the property. I am here tonight with the A&R plan for the property. I believe we were the last in front of your board to permit some modifications to a site plan for this property and development. The board may or may not know, but the project is currently under construction. The reason why we are here filing an A&R is through the building permit review process, the building inspectors in both the town of Andover and Tewksbury flagged that due to a technicality, the collection of parcels that you see on the plan in front of you were never legally combined as a lot consolidation into one lot. And they would not be able to issue a building permit because some of those interior lot lines do split the building, the proposed building.
That's not good.
That's why I'm here tonight. So essentially, through permitting and through the design process, we had always thought about this as one contiguous parcel. And that's how we've always proceeded. Due to that, you know, technicality, these parcels were all assembled at the same time in the 1980s, but never legally consolidated to one lot, which is the purpose of this plan in front of you.
Okay. Start with Mr. Lozard.
Do you have any photos of where... Or in the drawings where the buildings themselves are in this?
It's on the... I don't have them with me if I'm here tonight. Sorry about that. But generally, I can speak to it. There's one building that's proposed. It's 167,000 square feet. It's toward the western portion of the site. And it's split between... Split by the town line of Andover and Tewksbury. So there's about 70,000 square feet of the building in Tewksbury and 100,000 square feet in the town of Andover. I think that's all my questions.
All right. Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So am I looking... You're looking to combine the four lots, E, F, D, and H. Is that what I'm looking at right there?
Yes. I believe it's five lots in the town of Tewksbury. Let me just confirm that.
Well, I see aye, but that seems to be a small piece in Wilmington.
That's correct. I believe parcel A is actually partially split between Andover and Tewksbury.
Oh.
So these parcels date back a long ways. Some of them, you know, predate and were subdivided when I-93 was put in place, which I believe was back in the 50s, in the 1950s.
So are you looking for us to merge the Tewksbury portion of parcel A along with E, F, D, and H?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. I guess it just seems like housekeeping really to me, you know? So I'm good with that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I have no problem with what you're trying to do. I know what you're trying to do, to move forward. So, Mr. Lozard, while I have you on the board here, because most of the parcels in Andover, they do the majority of the permits and so forth, so they'll be getting, unfortunately, the fees and so forth for that, I believe, right? Is that correct, Ellis?
Tewksbury is still collecting a significant portion of the fees because they have to have permits in both towns or they can't build anything.
Right, right. But they... I think they do the inspections, correct? Andover does?
Actually, both building inspectors got sworn in in each other's town, so they'll be able to do the inspections together.
Oh, good. Okay, good. So yeah, so I know what you want to do and get the new lot lines together. So all this has to be done with the registered deeds as well?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. So yeah, I'm all set with that, Mr. Chairman.
All right. The chair has nothing to add straightforward. So what is the pleasure of the board?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to endorse the A&R plan at 33R and 4 Executive Place in Andover.
All right. Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Have a good night.
And Mr. Chairman, before we move on to item C, there's a scrivener's error. They actually requested a continuation to our June 26 meeting, not June 12. And that'll be at 7:00 PM.
Seven. All right. All right. So with that, we'll move to agenda item C, which is 1699 Shawshin Street, which again, the applicant has requested a continuance to our 6:26 meeting, 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion for that?
Yeah. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion made. Do I have a second? Motion made in second. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries unanimous. Moving on to agenda item D, 1695 Shawshin Street, site plan review, land disturbance. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
Motion made in second. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. Once you're settled, just give your name for the record. Floor is yours.
Can folks see the presentation now? Okay. Great. Good evening. Jeff Ketteritz, civil engineer with VHB. Welcome. I want to introduce the project team real quick. This is for 1695 Shawshin Street for the applicant, A&R Realty LLC, the tenant, Pierre Tewksbury. VHB is the civil landscape engineer, environmental engineer. We have representatives behind me as well, Bayside Engineering, the traffic engineers, and Joe Taton Associates for architecture, if there's any questions, comments beyond the presentation. So happy to walk you through now. Proposed project just east of Shawshin Street, south of Daskem Road, proposing a mixed-use building of office and retail space, associated surface parking, bike racks, site landscaping, lighting, snow storage areas as indicated in the dark green. Trash and loading is located at the rear of the building to the bottom right here in a padded enclosure. Project includes extension of town sidewalk along the frontage of Shawshin Street, both the full frontage of the 1695 property as well as a portion of the frontage to the 99 property of the north to make sure that crossing the new and existing driveways create a nice safe pedestrian refuge there. Just from a status update, we do have concurrent reviews. We're going through with the engineering department, DPW, responding to their comments. We also have a notice of intent in with the conservation commission. We've continued the Wednesday hearing so we can return to them with... Once we've closed the book with DPW. But no further comments from the conservation department. Just to give a quick overview of the site here, we're proposing two site drives. All drives are two-way, 24 feet wide. As said, associated parking sidewalks to all entry points of the building and around the perimeter with the snow storage areas, bike racks located based on the zoning criteria to the south here. And happy to get into a little more detail. We are in the city of Wetland Resources. You can see the associated buffer zones. 100-foot buffer is here, and that's where in front of Conservation Commission for at the moment as well. The proposed building, single-story, total of 6,600 square feet. About 4,000 of that is for the retail portion, about 2,000 is for the office portion on the northern side. We're expecting a maximum height of about 22 feet for the single-story at the moment. From a zoning standpoint, we're not requesting any relief. Tables included on the plans, and we'll continue to update these with any changes from the DPW review. But exceeding all of the proposed building parking setbacks, we're not planning to encroach any further onto those parking setbacks with additional walkways and pavement beyond making the connections to the public roadway. As you mentioned, the building height, one story, and well above slash below the requirements for building coverage, open space, and parking lot landscaping as well. I do want to point out here, just to speak to the parking summary, from a zoning standpoint, we have a requirement of 30 spaces. We are proposing more, and that is really due to our anticipation of the program anticipated at the use and how we would expect it to function. So that's the reason for additional parking beyond the requirement. And again, to the bike racks provided as well. Emergency vehicle access. We had just sit through the IDR meeting and have gotten some feedback from the fire department. The emergency vehicles are able to access and egress the site in either the drives, either direction without encroaching on any opposing lanes in Shawshin Street. All drive aisles provide a minimum obstructed 20-foot fire lane. The parking aisles themselves are 24-foot minimums. So there is additional access to turn around in the back as well, but we're maintaining full circulation without the vehicle having to back up or do so and enter and exit the Trash and loading, as briefly mentioned before, is anticipated to use the southern drive aisle. Vehicles would come and turn around at the back of the parking area into the dumpster enclosure that would be on a pad fenced off and drained to the rest of the parking lot with the closed drainage system. And vehicles... Garbage trucks would be able to pull out from there, back onto Shawshin again without encroaching on any oncoming lanes. And loading facilities would be similar. We're providing a back access way to entry doors on the opposite side of the building for maintenance loading access. So that would be limited to box trucks. We're not expecting any trailer traffic accessing the building. Landscaping, providing native species. We'll clarify in the requirements. Any potential changes to that, we'll obviously come back to the board. We'll make sure that's included in the documents. But supplementing the proposed landscape areas with planting anticipated as shown. Site lighting as well, we'll be using LED dark sky compliant fixtures. Fixtures will be aimed towards the interior of the site, away from abutting properties or the existing wooded area to the east. We will be including with the updated DPW comments some photometric plans showing light levels calculated. So that'll be part of the updated submission. But all fixtures will be LED and dark sky compliant. Quick grading and drainage overview. Our intent is to capture surface runoff on a closed drainage system and divert to one of two subsurface infiltration systems. The large green boxes there shown. We're going to promote as much infiltration as possible to reduce peak rates and volumes for the two 10, 25, 50, and 100-year storms. We've gone back out recently with DPW, performed some test pits in the locations and elevations based on the design to verify the soil conditions. And we'll be following up with that revised stormwater calc. Everything overflow from these in the larger storm events will go to one central flared end outlet here. But those are expected to be relatively minimal, not more than about 2.5 CFS in a 100-year storm event. We will be with the system here. We'll provide water quality to meet a minimum of 60% total phosphorus, a minimum of 90% total suspended solids. So we'll be fully conforming with the NASDEP as well as the applicable local stormwater And lastly, utility services beyond the stormwater management approach, which we're collecting and ultimately discharging to the east where it currently flows, all other utility services are planned to serve off of Shawshin Street, anticipating water, a new water service feed off of the main with a new hydrant within proximity of the fire department connections if applicable. Sanitary sewer from the building to an existing manhole on the southern edge of the frontage as well as gas telecommunications electric from likely the existing overhead wires. And that is it. But happy to hop back to anything, answer any questions, comments from the board.
Start with Mr. Lozard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I was listening to your speech about parking. You're proposing... We require 30. How many are you proposing on site?
We're currently proposing 75.
75, okay. All right. I thought that was part of the plan so that we could assist in the other retail space that we discussed earlier. So you'll be coming to us with a landscape plan eventually, correct?
Yes, that should be included in the packet.
Okay, I didn't see that. We have it in here?
We will. We are... We have made some minor adjustments, so we'll be reissuing an updated plan with the new set as well now.
So I was just curious. I know you said 4,000 square feet for the retail marijuana and 2,000 for the office. Is that a lot for a marijuana facility, 4,000 square feet? I mean, a lot. Someone coming in, you know, 2,000, 1,900, 1,800, whatever. I just didn't know if that was...
You got to come up with one of the microphones.
I jimson the terrorists with pure Tewksbury, DBA Smith cannabis. The proposed retail is about 4,500 square feet actually here. We have a store open in Lowell right now that is about 3,800 square feet. It is... It's pretty good. We could use a little extra space out back for the vault and for receiving. So we were looking for in that low 4,000s to mid 4,000s. I think it'll be perfect. It just gives us a little more space out back in the offices and stuff like that.
All right. I thought you were discussing that at one point with us, saying you didn't need that much space and you could function very well at another facility and didn't need a lot.
Yep. We don't, but if we're building a new building, I'll take it.
Right.
You know what I mean? We don't need it. We're operating right now at 3,800 square feet, fine, but we'll take an extra 700 square feet if we can use it. Yep.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Regarding the fire department access and egress from the site, we're going to need an okay from them.
Yep.
All right. Saying that they can get in and get out, so there's no question. All right. They're not going to give us the final okay. You know, they're not going to want you to put in these sidewalks and so forth until... But we need an initial okay saying, yeah, we can probably get in and get out okay.
Got it.
All right. So any proposed renderings coming in? I've seen a potential rendering you gave us earlier there, but...
We haven't developed any. We certainly will as we progress. And if there's anything else the board would like to see, we can...
It's always nice to get a rendering so that we as the board and the public can see what's proposed for that particular site.
We can include a floor plan as well of the dispensary.
Yep.
Proposed dispensary. Yep.
Good. But I'm all set right now. I know you get a bunch of issues outstanding, so I'm sure we'll see you again. So thank you.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to ask, I know you're coming with a landscape plan later on in your underground utilities. You showed a rough location where those are. Recently, we've had a couple of conflicts with landscaping and underground utilities. And we want to make sure that we kind of shake those out in the early stages of the process here so that we don't have to eliminate plantings later on because we have underground utilities in the way. So if we could just take care of that, you know, with some sort of an overlay on your end, that would be great.
Yep, absolutely.
We appreciate that. It's quite a drop-off that lot. I mean, if I'm looking at the topography there, I mean, you're a good five or six feet, you know, from the front door level to the street level there-ish.
It's towards the back.
Correct. Is that accurate?
Yes. Let me pull this up. Yeah, existing street level is about 130 to 132, and our finished floor is 127.5.
Yeah. Yeah, so and it looks like kind of a tight squeeze in the back there where it really starts dropping off severely. So I mean, it's not our purview, but I'd be interested to see the engineers, you know, you guys working with the engineer to make sure that you have the right, you know, the right runoff and so forth there and right, you know, capture the... And slow down the stormwater and, you know, reduce the erosion and that type of thing.
Absolutely.
It looks like the type of lot where you're really going to have to pay attention to that.
100%.
Yeah.
And maybe just to respond to some of that, we're actually going to work through that with DPW. I probably should have highlighted there, the backside of this project does include a retaining wall.
Yeah. Oh, it does. It does? I didn't see one on the plan.
Yes. This back end.
Oh, I must be on the wrong page. Okay. Sorry.
And but that will come with fence and guardrail along that whole stretch.
I see. Okay. Yep, yep. I'm looking at it.
And certainly from a stormwater management standpoint.
Sure. Well, that's probably a real good idea. Keep your property where it is for a while anyways.
Yeah. On average, it's probably about a 10, 10 to 12-foot, maybe 10 to 15-foot retaining wall on the backside.
Wow. Okay. That's all right, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Lozard?
Yeah, I think you answered most of my questions in the overview. Just wanted to touch a number of parking spaces again here because it's more than double kind of our requirements. How much traffic are you all actually expecting?
I think that... I can speak to that if you want. Yeah. I mean, I think that to start, we would expect three or four hundred customers a day, leading up to hopefully a lot more than that as we get established. Ideally, you'd like to, you know, see 800 customers a day. Currently at our store in Lowell, we have 40 parking spots. And we have, you know, we're parking some of our employees in there now and trying to find some space offsite. I think that 75 is plenty, for sure. I don't anticipate needing all those, but you've got 15 to 20 employees at the busy times. And you've got to plan on hopefully... I mean, I don't know if they're all going to be driving, but you've got to plan for it anyways. So I don't know if that helps that.
It does. That's all the questions I have.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously you have a few other things that you've got to still sort out with some of the other departments. Is that your traffic engineer? Is there anything you want to add at this point or... I mean, he's in the room. He's on the clock. Bring him up here.
I was hoping not to say anything.
Yeah, it'll keep your eyes down. You made eye contact.
Sorry, Mr. Johnson. I'm trying not to do that again. Ken Graham, Bayside Engineering. Yeah, we are in the process of doing a full traffic study. And we have the benefit of two peer reviews for the neighboring sites. So as a result of those peer reviews, we knew we were going to get the same questions. So we actually had to go out and get more counts done. And we got those. And I was hoping to have everything wrapped up for submission last Friday. Didn't happen. But in the next couple of days, we will get a full traffic study to you.
Can I ask you something? Because I was remiss in not asking this before because it didn't... I don't know why it didn't pop into my head, but how, if at all, is the slow train worked into the traffic study that happens up there? I don't know. I have no idea if there's any consistency to it. I just know how irritating and far back up cars get when it goes by. And I'm just curious, is that factored in and how? Because I mean, I don't know if there's a consistency.
We have not factored it in, but you're right. It's inconsistent. And sometimes it's a four-car, five-car train. Sometimes it's 40. There's no rhyme or reason that we know of. But it just happens. And just like every other acreade crossing, traffic stops. And, you know, five or 10 minutes after it's gone, it's cleared up again. But it's just one of those things.
I know I've, you know, I've gotten caught at them at different parts of town. And like you said, sometimes, you know, you're staring at the same type of thing go by for quite some time. And obviously, 300, 400 customers a day, depending on when that's happening, you know, whether that's your busy time or not, now you... You know, you don't really have much trouble coming back down Shawshin. I suppose theoretically you could queue that up all the way down to the light. Not that you'd want that to happen, but that's not an issue. It's the other direction coming back up towards East Street, you know, the light just after Daskem that I'm curious about. So I don't know exactly how far that is and how much room it would give. Obviously, this isn't here now, and I've seen it back up, you know, a decent way back. So like I said, just something that kind of popped into my head, and I don't know why I didn't ask it before, but I'm asking now.
We'll see what we can find out.
All right. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
One more quick question. The... I noticed that there was a little bit of a conflict there with the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through where it kind of crosses the corner of the lot here. And what's the game plan going forward with that?
If I can... Sorry. I don't know if I can zoom in here, but our approach, and we need to close the loop with DPW, but our hope is to tweak the southern edge of that drive aisle just enough so that we do pull it fully onto the existing 1699 property. We can do that without impeding on the truck or emergency vehicle access into the site. The radius of that would still go just a touch past the frontage. Uh, the radius of that would still go just a touch past the frontage, so if there was some access, uh, agreement at some point, uh, we can look into that. It is currently the same owner on both sites, but our intent is to play with the southern edge of that.
So, so right now, it doesn't look like you're gonna need any kind of an easement or anything to, uh, from one lot to the other?
Hopefully not, yeah.
But possibly.
Right.
Yeah.
But in the event you do, it's one owner right now.
Correct, correct.
Hopefully they can come to an agreement.
Chair, a couple comments, too. That Dunkin' Donuts issue, I'd be proud of, Mr. Duffy, is a nightmare. I've been in there and I got stuck in there and I, I wanted to get out, but you're not, you're not getting out.
Yeah.
It's almost like too bad they couldn't get around, go through the parking lot and come around the outside and back in. It'll happen to go in the back there. It's just, I wasn't on board. I think maybe Mr. Johnson might have been here when they came in, but, uh, but I was shocked when I went through there one time. I'm like, oh my God, I can't get out of here if I wanted to. You know, I mean, you're stuck there for 10 to 15 minutes sometimes because somebody's ordering a box of Joe or something and they go in there, so, uh, but, uh, just a, just a comment, but, uh, and Mr. Graham, Graham, um, I've counted 100 cars from the trains with my grandson down at the soccer game as we watched the car, the trains go by. 100 cars, one time. That's how, how many it can be. So it's not, it's not a small number sometimes, but just an FYI, so.
That I must have, Mr. Chairman. All right, so with that, I'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns at this time? If you want to just come up to the podium and just give your name and your address, the floor is yours. Have to use the microphone because that way we pick it up on the recording and people at home can hear.
My name is David Norman. I'm a resident of Tewksbury. I was just wondering...
I just need your address, though.
35 Kingston Road.
Thank you.
I was wondering if the traffic report would be available to, for the public? Could I pick up a copy of it?
Yes.
That's...
Yeah, just give, give the, um, community development department a call.
Okay.
When, obviously they don't have it yet, so nothing to give you so far, but once it's available, um, I'm sure they can make it available for you. Um, I don't know, is that multiple ways? Is it on a fob or...
You can come in and look at it at the office, or I can email it to you.
If you would email it?
Yep.
That'd be great, Alex, thank you.
So if you check in after the meeting, you can give your information or whatever, okay?
Fine.
Give a call this week or something?
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Going once, twice? All right, bring it back to the Board. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Making motions to continue the hearing, Mr. Chairman, to our next, June 12th, this uh, our next meeting?
Yep, and it'll be 7:35. Busy night.
Oh, boy.
All right. So, uh, we have a motion to continue. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Thank you. All right, see you at the next one.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, that brings us to Agenda Item E, which as we've mentioned earlier, the petitioner has requested that we, uh, that this be withdrawn without prejudice. So do I have a motion for that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, making motion to, um, accept a withdrawal without prejudice, um, letter from the applicant at 913 East Street.
All right, I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Takes care of E. Moving on to Agenda Item F, which is 2 Radcliffe Road. That petitioner has also requested a continuance to our next meeting and we have them penciled in for 7:00 PM. So do I have a motion to continue?
So move.
I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to correspondence, which I don't believe I saw on the, correct?
Yeah.
Was it one? Did I miss one?
2122 Main Street.